Good evening, everyone. And thank you for attending the Wareham Planning Board Agenda for this evening, Monday, August 8th, 2022. I will entertain opening the meeting with a roll call of the Planning Board members. Sherri Quirk.
Here.
Mike Baptiste.
Jane Gleason.
Sam Corbett.
Here.
Carl Schultz.
Here.
And myself, Mike King, here. So we have a full board tonight. So let's dive right into it. I'm sure everybody's had a very hot, sticky day. Bill, if you want to come forward for 1822, Case 18-22 A and R, Kenneth and Valerie Faboul. Sorry if I screwed that up. Map 11 Lot A.
I think the last time we were here, a couple of weeks ago, there was a typographical error on the plan that was brought up that was requiring corrections. I think it was down in the table. There were two lots, A1. One was A1 and one was 1A. And we made those revisions to the plan. And I think it's, I think it's all set.
You added the comments that we asked for, right?
Pardon me?
The comments. You added the comments, the notes, the notes to the plan.
The notes were already added?
Different case.
Oh, that was, never mind.
Yeah, I think ours were always, our notes were...
I know. So there's so many ANRs, I got confused. I apologize.
No worries.
So the fact that the descriptions, it still says lot 1 dot A?
Yep.
That's not an issue?
No, that's, actually, the issue might be that the plan view just has it 1A, no dot. I have a Sharpie with me if you'd like me to put a dot on there. And then when I scan that plan after it's signed and whatever, we record it, it'll...
So that they match?
So that they match, yeah. I just, yeah, wasn't able to see that till, I don't know, 20 minutes ago.
Shouldn't that be done with a revision date, Bill?
Pardon me?
Shouldn't that be done in the revision, noted in there?
I don't know if it needs, if it needs have revision date. They didn't put a revision date on it either. I mean, that's the original plan. We don't have, you haven't signed it, you haven't taken any action on it. So I think it could, I think it can remain the date that we have in the plan. However, if you'd like it to be changed, I'm happy to change it as well.
Just trying to keep him honest, that's all. We want to let you know that we're aware.
That's good.
In the bottom corner.
That's what I was just going, about them not being built with their lots.
That's right.
That's the note I was talking about. He said it was there before.
I didn't say it before, but it could have been.
Keep that kind of debated.
Yeah, okay.
I'm not certain.
Any comments from the board or...
Well, chastise me, please. Get yelled at all day. Charlie, do you have any comments?
No, it's fine.
Anybody on the board have comments, concerns?
Motion to endorse?
It's a good motion. Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Mike Baptiste to endorse. We have a second by Jane Gleason. All those in favor. Mike Baptiste.
Aye.
Jane Gleason.
Aye.
Sam Corbett.
Aye.
Carl Schultz.
I'm still confused about frontage, but I'll go with the board, aye.
Aye, okay. And the chair votes aye, 500 to endorse. Thank you, Bill. See, I didn't ask Sherri to vote this time.
She's keeping track.
It only took me, what, six meetings to get that through my thick skull?
Breaking a balance.
Yeah.
Zero no votes. Zero votes, six to vote.
Hmm? Do we have more to do with you, Bill? Are you hanging out? I said, do we have more to do with you or are you hanging out because you like us?
Well, we're going to submit a plan for site plan review.
Yeah, okay.
It's not on the agenda.
It's not, it was...
But it's not reasonably expected.
It was last minute.
You didn't even have the "not reasonably expected" on the agenda.
Yes, I gave my Sharpie to Monique.
There you go.
Somebody else used the batter.
There you go. Did we put the dot in? Let me do it.
Jane's going to put the dot in.
All right. Public hearings. You just like picking on me. I know how it goes.
Pick your poison, Mr. ...
Is it here where you sign those? Those are for the A and R?
Give me that.
You can stop by later.
Make it as smooth as you find a Sharpie rolling around the oval. That's for Bill.
Thank you. Thanks very much.
Okay, next up, public hearings, amendment to Article 6, Density and Dimensional Zoning Bylaw. Public hearing sponsor is the planning board. So is there any, do we have, I thought we resolved everything on this at the last meeting.
I thought we did too, but it got sent back to the ZBA for, just to let them know what we had done. And I did watch their meeting, and they did not seem terribly pleased with what we had done.
Okay.
So I, at their meeting, they said that they would be here at this meeting, and I don't see them here.
Do we have a representative from the ZBA here tonight, online or in the room? No? Okay.
Oh, yes.
I'm new though, so Nazee's supposed to be here to go over everything he has.
Well, he's late. Should we accommodate him and move it further down the schedule or...
Uh...
I would think that if they had concerns about it, that he would have been here to discuss it.
On the other hand, I think if we close the public hearing without getting their input, that...
That just creates more ratio.
Yeah.
That's not good.
So let's, let's...
Okay. So we'll accommodate Mr. Public, the Planning Board, ZBA, and we'll move this discussion further down the agenda for this evening.
Is there any, oh, we're moving it anyway, it doesn't matter.
All right. Continued public hearings, 12-2291 and 101, Farring Hill Road, Site Plan Review. Applicant Wareham, Mass. 3 LLC, proposing ground-mounted solar energy generation facility. Map 91 and 71, lots 1,000 and 1,007. Thank you.
Chairman, members of the board, for the record, my name is Joe Shanahan, Senior Project Developer for the applicant in connection with this particular matter. At this point, just a quick update. We were back in front of the Conservation Commission last week on August 3rd. The Towns Consulting Hydrogeologist Neil Price made a brief presentation to the Commission and answered a number of questions. They appeared to be satisfied with his report. With that, it was my understanding, and I haven't seen anything in written form, that Mr. Prichet did not want to make a recommendation to the Commission until Mr. Rowley has had an opportunity to comment on the latest round of revisions that we have on the site plan. So we agreed to continue the public hearing to their next meeting on August 17. I don't know whether they've reached out to you, Mr. Rowley, and asked for your comments at this point, but it's kind of chicken and egg, as far as I understand it. I don't mean to put you in the middle, but that's what they indicated publicly.
Okay. I have not commented to them, they haven't reached out to me, other than the email that I saw or a letter that I saw from the Conservation Commission. And that letter suggested that you had said that there might be further revisions to the plans, and that statement was made at the August 3rd meeting. So the plan set that I have is July 26th. So have you got something other than that that's forthcoming?
No, we were waiting for any further comments you might have.
Okay, so the statement that's there that says additional plan revisions are coming was not quite correct?
We indicated that if Mr. Rowley has any comments that we need to address or revisions we need to incorporate, we'd obviously make those before there was an act of the Conservation Commission. And I'm not seeking to hurry you, I just want to get a feel for how that's set up, that's all.
Okay. I've looked at the plans a little bit, Mr. Chairman. I haven't finished an actual review of the plans. It appears that many of the comments that I had set forth in my letter previous to the 26th have been addressed. I've looked at the site plan, and they've incorporated some features that I requested that they do. But in my letter, I had suggested some other things, such as a monitoring well and setting up a program for reporting the results of that monitoring of that new well plus two that are already on the site. So I think there probably needs to be some discussion about that. I'm a little bit concerned, not concerned, but I have a couple of questions with regard to the documentation that was given on how they size the sedimentation areas now that are in each of the drainage areas. They have used a, a format or used a method of determining the size of that that's a little bit unusual, because we're not dealing with impervious surfaces, we're dealing with sedimentation. And what they calculated was the sediment based on soil slope, soil type, rainfall, and so forth. And it's based on a different set of criteria than normally you get out of the storm water management requirements set forth by DEP. So they did show the results in tabular form, but they gave as footnotes where they got the documentation from. And I haven't had a chance to actually get back to them and say, I'd like to see the pages that identified the variations where that documentation actually was presented in final form in these tables we see. So in those footnotes, it mentions four or five different tables in a particular engineering hydrology textbook. I'd like to see what those, that backup information looks like.
Okay. So we still have some more homework to do, then?
A little bit.
Yeah.
Yeah.
With that, Mr. Chairman, the one thing I was hoping to do, and particularly because you have a relatively short agenda this evening, is many of you are aware and some of you have commented upon, this process has now been going on for about 15 months. A lot has been submitted to this board. Some of it has not been publicly addressed on the public record, although it's been submitted in the form of written reports or comments. I know Monique has done yeoman's chore in getting everything up on the website, but I'd like to take, if I may, five or seven minutes and just run through what has taken place over the last 15 months to get it on the record, to perfect the public record, particularly if there's ever any need for any proceedings after the planning board vote. I'm certain some of the things you may recall, but some of them you will have forgotten. Others are matters that, for instance, Ms. Gleason or Ms. Quirk probably haven't heard of before. So if I might just take those five to seven minutes, I'll run right through it, Mr. Chairman.
I don't see a problem with that.
I actually would appreciate that, because I'm trying to get up to speed and...
I've submitted my notes that I'll address currently. It's not in narrative form, but it kind of walks you through it. Just briefly, we submitted these, the plans for this project to the planning board and the Conservation Commission back on May 17th, 2021. Those original plans showed 26.76 acres of clearing on this 44-acre site. That has now been reduced by 24% to 20.17 acres of clearing to accommodate all of the comments and recommendations by the Towns Consulting Hydrogeologist, Mr. Price, and the Towns Consulting Engineer, Mr. Rowley, subject to his comments earlier this evening. Just briefly, what else has taken place over the last 15 months? The planning department and members of this board had a site walk with me in Atlantic back on July 21st, 2021, to view and assess visual impact, if any, of the project. The board at that time requested that we redesign the access drive, so instead of going straight in, it goes in an angle lessening the view from Farring Hill Road. We also added landscaping along that access drive, and in accordance with the request, provided line of site diagrams per the board's request. Just briefly, while we talk about visual impact and plantings, after the site walk with the board this July, the 25th of July, we provided to the planning board and the planning board, the planning department and the planning board, the following commitments, which are now shown on the revised plans that are being looked at by Mr. Rowley. First, the developer is increasing the buffer north of the DeMello property to 85 feet. Were required to have 50, we were at 71. Mr. Rowley asked it be extended still further, so we went to 85 feet of buffer, and that locates the project 170 feet from the closest, that is, the northwest corner of the DeMello Resonance. This revision will result in the loss of still two more rows of panels in the solar array, but hopefully will accomplish Mr. Rowley's purpose of lessening the visual impact. In addition, as a result of speaking with Mr. Buckland, we've agreed to post a $15,000 cash bond with the town as surety to address any unexpected visual impact from the project after its completion, to be administered as follows. After completion of the project, the town and its staff will revisit the line of site diagrams, which were submitted nearly a year ago, inspect the site, and determine if additional plantings are required to lessen visual impact of the project in the area where we currently are proposing six-foot-tall green giant alveidi and further down by the access drive. If the town or the town planning department determine additional plantings are required, we'll be notified, we'll submit a follow-up landscaping plan. If it's approved by the town, we'll go forward and make those installations. If for some reason the developer does not respond in a reasonable time, the town will have that $15,000 to go in and install the plantings themselves. Second, we shall, for a period of two years after the project is completed, post a $10,000 cash bond with the town as surety to repair or replace any plantings which don't or won't establish, and instead of thriving, they decline, to be administered similar to what I referred to up above, for a period of two years after the plantings. They are subject to inspection. If the town requires the repair or replacement of any plantings, and they're not done within a reasonable time, the town would have that $10,000 cash to do that. Further along in the proceedings, at one of our first hearings before the board, some of you may recall, Mr. King requested that the developer eliminate a number of the utility poles proposed to service the site. He was particularly concerned with the utility poles that were carrying utility equipment on them. We went out at his request, negotiated with the utility, and we were able to eliminate those poles and do ground mounts for all of that equipment. Further, Mr. King, while acknowledging that there would be substantial clearing for the project, he asked the developer to commit to making no profit from the cutting of the trees in connection with the project. He indicated at that time one other solar developer had done that. He thought it was a good idea. As a result of that, we went out and had a Massachusetts licensed forester do a full inventory of the 20 acres being cut. He valued the timber of those trees being cut at $19,690, and we've submitted a commitment to the town that we will pay that amount to the town to be used at its discretion, rather than making that, quote, "profit from the timber." I'd also quickly like to address the matter of tree clearing to submit some of the information that we previously submitted to the board, particularly with regard to the greenhouse gas offsets resulting from the solar project. We submitted the EPA's greenhouse gas calculator, and from that, we show that 4,831 metric tons of carbon dioxide, CO2, each year for the life of the project that will be saved. That's the equivalent of taking over 12 million passenger car miles driven and their fossil fuel emissions off the road each year. By comparison, and again, keep in mind, we would be clearing 20 of the 44 acres. By comparison, it would take 5,919 acres of forest to sequester that much CO2 in a year. That's a ratio of 257 to 1 compared to the number of acres to be cut for this solar project. We've also conferred with the Wareham Fire Department, has issued a letter to this board. We've agreed on the detection alarm and suppression systems to be used at the project, and agreed to the department's request that we provide emergency responder training in connection with the project. When the planning board requested evidence that the project complied with the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection noise policy, we engaged HMMH, an internationally recognized firm, to conduct a study, at a cost of $17,000, by the way, which concluded that with the installation of sound barrier walls around certain equipment pads, the project will comply. Our plans have been revised to include those sound barrier walls. In response to questions of possible historic, cultural, or archaeological resources at the site, the developer has submitted a report indicating that, based upon local, state, and federal data, there are no such resources or protected areas at the site. In response to questions of possible threatened or endangered species at the site, we submitted a report indicating that there are no such species at the site. However, out of an abundance of caution for the endangered Plymouth Redberry, Red-belly turtle, which is mapped on the IPAC mapper in parts of southern Massachusetts, no indication at this site, no indication in that area, but in an abundance of caution, we have elected and notified NHESP, Mass. Wildlife, that we will voluntarily enter upon a turtle protection plan that will be overseen and conducted by an NHESP-approved turtle biologist. This plan will be designed to ensure protection of the turtle prior to and during construction of this facility, and we've committed to the cost of $22,000 to do that turtle protection plan. We have submitted and then updated a decommissioning plan to the satisfaction of the planning board, which provides for the posting of a bond in the amount of $232,000, which will be reviewed and updated every five years to account for inflation. And as all of the board is aware, and most significantly, in response to the planning board's expressed concerns about the possibility that the solar project adversely impacted groundwater flows from the site to the Farring Hill neighborhood, the developer agreed to fund the town's hiring of Horsey-Witten Group, a well-recognized hydrogeology firm, and I again stress that the town hired HW, and they, he worked for them, to review the project at a cost of $33,000. After the developer incorporated all of the consultant's recommendations into its plans, including the consultant's suggestion that the much more strict Rhode Island guidance be adhered to, the consultant has opined to the planning board that the project will not be a detrimental use at the site, and he is expected to sign off on the project once final plans are completed. I would also indicate that at an additional cost of $5,000, the hydrogeologist appeared before the Conservation Commission last week to make the same opinion. As part of addressing the Horsey-Wittlin recommendations, the developer has agreed to work with municipal maintenance to pay for the clearing of the culvert at the railroad bed and keep the culvert clear for the life of the solar project. Further, and this is in follow-up to Mr. Rowley's recommendations, we're currently working with Horsey-Witten to develop a two-year monitoring program to follow up on the testing already done at the site. This will involve inspections of the wells every other week during the six to nine months from the start of construction to completion, and will also include inspections after any large, larger storm event. That plan or program will also address the matter of Mr. Rowley's recommendation for off-site monitoring. This monitoring program, we now have a proposal at approximately $50,000 to follow up on that after completion of the project. One other matter that warrants mentioning, on November 9, 2021, the developer paid to the town of Wareham the sum of $232,000, representing beddements which have been assessed against this site for a number of years, which the landowner had long refused to pay. I mention this as further evidence of the developer's commitment to be a good corporate neighbor and of its all-in commitment to developing a solar project at the site. I appreciate your patience. I know some of that is a redundancy for many of you, but I appreciate you letting me perfect the record with that information. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any comments from the board, questions?
My little concern is the policy that we adopt with the Conservation Commission. As was stated, within 15 months with this, I've heard everything I want to hear. I'm ready to vote. I was hoping to vote tonight. We don't have the report from the commission yet. I think I'd like to work something out where we can get the information, the documentation we need on a timely basis, so we can vote on it.
Okay, thank you. Carl?
Thank you, Mr. Shanahan, for that summary. I'm going to take the time to review it.
I'm sure you will. Thank you.
A couple of questions, you stimulated some thoughts. Thank you for the turtle protection program. I think that's a good idea. Also regarding that, I know that you've addressed the mass, the ancient ways and artifacts and historical. I understand there's a program that we could implement to just do a survey while you're doing construction, and if, to see if there are any artifacts uncovered. And if they were uncovered, I think if I understand it, they could be inventoried, and that could then address any concerns about that. Would you, are you aware of, and I'm speaking...
I'm very much aware of it, Mr. Schultz.
Speaking loosely, so...
Yeah, I'm very much aware of it. You won't have to implement the program. It's a matter of state law. During construction, if there's any evidence of such antiquities or artifacts found, our contractor has to stop. We immediately have to bring in an expert to take a look at what the matter is and whether it might have any ramifications and consequences in further construction. If this board approves the project, I have no problem with you calling that out as a condition in an approval, but I think Mr. Rowley's probably aware of it. You've all heard the stories of the project... You've all heard the stories of a project being stopped because an arrowhead was found. Those are true stories.
Okay. So we could, we could condition it--
Yes.
--on that, and you would positively report if--
You bet.
Okay. The other, the other issue, which I remember sort of being at dispute, which is the ancient ways. And what I was going to say, or my question would be, and I, and I'm going to ask two questions. One, would it be possible, in the spirit of maintaining the ancient way, to route it along the outside of the fence? And the second part of that question is, what I don't understand is what's the landowner's liability if people traverse that? I'm concerned about that if we conditioned it that way.
Well, first of all, there will be no public access to anything inside a fence.
That's what I said out, that's why I said outside.
And I, I can't imagine the landowner agreeing to enter into an easement that will allow the public to access the other 24 acres of his land. So--
Okay. That was just a question, and I, I understand--
Quite candidly, Mr. Shoals, an ancient way is kind of a nebulous term.
I understood that. I was trying to find a way to navigate through the, through the concerns, but I also understand the liability issue, which I don't know how you would resolve. Thank you for that. On the operations and maintenance plan, I acknowledge that you updated it, and I acknowledge that, would you be opposed to us clarifying the conditioning on that, which would require positive reporting to the planning office and the planning board on the status of that plan?
No problem, Earl.
That was a discussion that we've had, that we, we haven't, we've, we've got the bylaw, but we don't really call out the need for positive reporting. So you would be open to that, right?
We would hope all the reporting would be negative, Mr. Shoals.
What I meant is, positive reporting, by that I mean, there's actually a report that's submitted--
I understand what you're saying. Yes.
On the groundwater monitoring, the wells, the flows, I understand to say that you're going to monitor the flows after an event and periodically--
During construction, which will run six to nine months, they will be monitored and a positive report will issue every two weeks. If there is a larger storm event in the interim, that would also be inspected and reported. And even after the project is completed, that monitoring program would stay in place for an entire two-year plan.
Could we, and I don't know the impact of this, could we get it for the entire life of the project? I don't know, I don't know what the cost--
I will tell you, the cost is $50,000 for the first two years. So there is no way, and quite candidly, no need to be doing that monitoring beyond two years.
So it would be two years after the array is operational?
It would be two years from the start, which would, construction would be completed in approximately nine months, and then it would be 15 months after that.
So we would have an operational period that's covered at that and would satisfy--
Correct, correct.
And the assumption would be, if we find that the conditions vary significantly, that you'll negotiate or work with the town to mitigate, implement mitigation--
Oh, absolutely. Yep.
Be the assumption. The next thing is sort of a question, and I don't know the answer to that. The issue of PFAs has been raised, and I know that we have certification that the panels do not leach PFAs. Is it possible to test the water in some of these wells when you're doing the sampling to see if there are PFAs to satisfy everybody's concern that that's not happening? Is that a possibility?
It's a distinct possibility. We're spending--
I'm just trying--
I understand your intent. I just, I want to underscore the fact that we're spending millions of dollars to buy JNCO panels because they're certified not to have the PFAs, but I understand your concern about the issue having been addressed, and I, I will, I will commit that we will do that.
At least look into the cost, and if you come back and say it's--
I shall. Yep, I don't have a problem with that. It's not an unreasonable request.
That would set everybody's--
Yep.
Okay, those, those, I think that covered all of my questions.
Your questions, okay. Sherri?
So, a couple of questions. First of all, thank you for this.
You're very welcome.
For, for some of us, this proceeding began well after this, so--
Yes, I understand.
So it's more recent. One question raised by your presentation, you talk about endangered species and it looks like endangered species removal. Is that--
Pardon me?
Endangered species removal? What--
Well, first, we'll start with the umbrella issue. There are no endangered or threatening species at the site. That's been confirmed. There is a concern on the part of U.S. Fish and Wildlife that there are the Plymouth Redberry Turtle occasionally found in southeastern Massachusetts. Not on this site, not in Wareham, but it's a concern. It was raised in their letter where they gave us the Clean Bill of Health, and they suggested that we might want to volunteer to undertake the turtle protection plan, which basically means that throughout construction to the completion of the project, there are what they call sweeps through the site to make sure there are no turtles found. If they're found, they're removed from the site. In addition, we put a barrier all around the site to make sure none come in during construction. The letter goes into great detail about the characteristics the species have with regard to traveling and how far they travel--
Right.
--and what they gravitate to in terms of streams and deeper waters, things that aren't characteristic of our site. But quite candidly, when the U.S. Fish and Wildlife make a suggestion, Con Edison, which is far bigger than I--
Right.
--generally acquiesces to the suggestion.
I was intrigued. I have had to deal with endangered species before. I never realized that one could move them, so that's, that's a part of this, that's--
They're known to only move about 125 feet from where they nest. So as the fellow says, that ain't going to happen, but it's just another level of comfort that we can provide to the town.
Okay. You also mentioned fire suppression or first responder training.
Yep.
And the reason for this is, is that related to the, the batteries or is it to the panels? Tell me a little bit more about that.
It's both, but the batteries is probably the bigger issue for the fire department because they have no prior experience with it. Con Edison actually has a health and safety director who speaks to this in the 27 different states in which we operate. So he will come in, he will follow whatever the lead, the chief or deputy chief requests, but walk through exactly what's done. Quite candidly, what they're directed to do is not enter the fenced enclosure. If there's a fire, they're directed to stay out of there, let it do its damage. If you need to do any kind of control outside the fence, feel free to do it, but we don't ask first responders to come in. They're shown how to shut off the electrical coming in and going out, but that's it. They just stay there.
Okay. All right. One issue that has come up, and you brought it up tonight as well, is that the culvert over the railroad tracks under the road, and where does that go? Where does that water go?
Well, we really couldn't find an end to the culvert. We can find ultimately, it discharges into a wetland quite a ways down, and we know the water is discharging because it doesn't back up and stop up there. So the best we can do is clean it out and continue to maintain it so that water continues to flow freely to wherever it's going.
And as far as you can tell, there's no impact downstream where, where you can see that it comes out?
We were, Mr. Row, I think it was Mr. Rowley, it may have been Mr. Price. He asked us to follow up on that. Rich, can you address that better?
Sure.
If I might introduce Rich Trebozinski from Atlantic Design Group.
Rich Trebozinski with Atlantic Design Engineers. The culvert in question crosses underneath Farring Hill Road just to the southwest of the, of the project corner, and basically there's an abandoned railroad bed on this side and a portion of one on the other side of Farring Hill Road also. So the culvert drains from the northern portion of that railroad bed to the southern portion. And we, we followed the railroad bed down 100 or so feet or whatever, and it just kept going, and we didn't, we didn't feel like we had the right to extend, to extend our survey any farther onto private property beyond that. But as you can see on the aerial, there's a cranberry bog operation down here. I feel that that's probably running alongside it, continuing south. So that's basically it, but there was water, water flow and water observed on this side of the, of Farring Hill Road. So we're just making sure that that continues along underneath Farring Hill and then continues along in that abandoned railroad bed. It doesn't really show up on the aerial view here, but it's, it's a straight shot south of Farring Hill Road.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
One other question or area. You talked about with respect to the buffers, providing some additional funding for vegetation to make sure that the intended cover develops, and, and if it doesn't, you'll come in and do, do something for that.
Correct.
Is that just for the buffer, or does that also include the meadow?
We're looking principally at the impact in those areas affected by the buffer, just for an overview, and again, it was before you came upon the board, but when the planning department, the planning board went out to Farring Hill Road with us, our project initially had the driveway going straight in off of Farring Hill Road at a 90-degree angle, and if you were across the street and you looked at it, you'd see right up the driveway to the project. Mr. King and others asked that what we do is come in off the road and then curve it so that you wouldn't have that look, and what you'd be looking into was the existing trees and buffer, and as it took the curve to add landscaping in that area also, which is what we've done. Mr. Rowley had a concern with regard to the buffer behind the DeMello property, so we increased it from the required 50 feet to the 85 feet. What I am proposing to do with the cash bond is two things. Number one, after the project is complete, if Monique and Ken and the board go out and view the driveway and/or the DeMello site and feel there is not still enough screening, if you will, they would say to us, hey, do a plan to address this. We'd do it. If the plan was approved, we'd install it. If, and I'm not suggesting it would ever happen, but as surety for the town to make sure it gets done, if for some reason we didn't do it, then the town would have that $15,000 to add trees along the driveway if they felt it was necessary, and/or to put screening in the buffer between DeMello's and the project 170 feet away.
Okay, okay. Mr. Chairman, that's all I have for the moment. I may have some additional questions later on.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Baptiste?
Well, we've been listening to this for two years, and something that I haven't heard yet was, we haven't, we have never done a soil evaluation on the project, on the site.
What's that, Mr. Baptiste?
Soil evaluation on the site. Now, the hydrology study is totally different than soil evaluation.
I, I guess, first of all, I'm not sure why you would want a soil evaluation.
Well, I, I don't agree with the hydrologist's report for one thing. And another thing, with soils that are present there, the water's going to cascade in different areas. Without a soil evaluation, we don't know where it's going to go.
Well, with all due respect, Mr. Baptiste, that is what the hydrogeology and-- May I finish?
Yep.
That is what the hydrogeology and hydraulic study and assessment were done. We did test pits. The soils were evaluated in those test pits. The professional hydrogeologist did provide volumes of information with regard to where not only the groundwater flow would go, but the ground mounding would go. So I'd respectfully suggest, when the town told me to proceed with the project, and I think Mr. Rowley at that time acknowledged that that was not his area of expertise, when the town said, for you to move forward, you'll have to agree to fund a professional hydrogeologist and report coming back to us to allay our concerns about those issues. The town interviewed the firm. The town hired the firm, and the town developed the scope of work for the firm to accomplish its purposes. So you certainly have every right in the world to disagree with it, but I respectfully suggest that when a municipality goes that route and ends up with results that perhaps it doesn't like, it shouldn't be a matter of disagreeing with it. You can certainly don't like it, but I, I'm not sure anyone in this room, perhaps other than Mr. Rowley and my engineer, have the technical expertise to disagree with the report that's been submitted to this board.
I, I don't agree with you, and as I'm concerned, this public hearing will not be closed until there's a soil evaluation done. The hydrology test is totally different. It's a totally different discipline.
Soil evaluations done in all eight-- They were done by a licensed soil evaluator.
Yeah, I'm not sure if you heard it, but there were soil evaluations, and I referenced this earlier, done in all the test pits, and they were done by a licensed soil evaluator. So the data you're looking for may be in the report, if you look for it, and I, I know you weren't present for the presentation by the hydrogeologist, so you wouldn't have heard it if it was addressed at that time, but we have provided that information to the board through your consultant.
I'm not satisfied, is all I can say.
Anything else, Mike?
That's, that's it for right now.
That was, that was your one? Okay.
I think that's a quite sizable one. The thing is, is if we have a problem later on down the road, how, how do you protect the people that live there, along the residence? You know, your job is to push this project forward, and like I said, I don't agree with you. I really don't. And I don't want some artifacts on the soil evaluation.
Well, Mr. Baptiste, I heard you say that the very first time I appeared before the board. We've done all of what I've submitted to the board this evening on the public record. I, I'm sorry if it doesn't change your mind, but I, with all due respect, I think your mind was made up then, and you haven't allowed us to change your mind.
Okay. Well, I think the point's been made. Jane?
So, in light of what you just were discussing with Mr. Baptiste, I would say that there's some questions that I still have for Horstley-Witten that I would like to either get a response from or have Mr. Price come back to us, because he gave us his presentation, but I don't feel like there was an adequate amount of time for me to absorb what he said and ask questions about it. In particular, my question is that, from what I can see of that report, it gives us information about the existing conditions and the groundwater, the water table, and what happens with runoff. And it talks about, once construction is complete and all of the plantings are fully established, what happens with the groundwater and what happens with runoff. But there's, there, I could not find anything that really satisfied my question of what happens during construction with both of those things, with the groundwater and with runoff. I think groundwater may be less of an issue than the runoff based on it being, what's that called? that called, thin till, which, from what I can glean, includes a component of clay, which makes a bit of a lens, and so is not terribly pervious. So I think that the groundwater is, in my mind, less of an issue than the runoff. I think the runoff is not going to be able to permeate that ground, and it's just going to carry everything that you put on the site with it. So I would like to hear from Horsley-Witten about that interim period and what's going to happen. But then...
If I might just respond to that before you go further. I just repeat again, Mr. Price and Horsley-Witten are the town.
Are the town. Understood. And that's why I sort of am not hoping for you.
I understand your concern, and if you would like to bring Mr. Price back, I certainly understand he's the best person to address it.
And I totally appreciate your --
Even though I'll be paying for it.
And I understand that you're not the one to answer that question. So I do have a couple of questions, though, that maybe you can answer. One is about the south side of the project. From all that I've been reading, I understand that really at the south side, and to a certain degree, the east and west sides of a project, the tree line really needs to be held back from the panels by at least, they're saying one to they, who are the readings that I did, one to two times the height of the trees, so that you're not shading the panels. And right now, the way the plan is laid out, it looks to me like at the south side, there's only 20 feet between the tree line and the panel line.
When you refer to readings and "they," I presume you're talking about resources outside anything we've submitted to you, is that correct?
Yes, I've just been reading.
Okay. What I would indicate to you is, we have a 44-acre site.
Mm-hmm.
We're planning to clear just over 20 acres. Approximately 18 of those acres are fenced in. The tree lines shown on the plan are where the tree lines will be.
Right. So I see at the south side of the site, there are trees within 20 feet of the panel layout. And to me, that, it's clear that you're going to have shade from those trees. Those trees are taller than 20 feet.
With all due respect, Ms. Gleason, our engineering team developed what they call the PV syst for this project. They told us what we needed to do. We've put it in the form of a site plan. Somebody other than me is going to be in big trouble if they've created a site that doesn't work with shading. I'm comfortable with the site plan as it's submitted.
So what you're saying is, is what we see is what we get?
That's correct.
That would --
Obviously, if that's what you approved, we're not allowed to go in and cut five feet further into that tree line.
So to me, that says that you're going to have the first row, maybe two, not doing what they're supposed to do because there's tree shade on them a good portion of the time?
Probably will not be giving us optimal production at the highest point during the day.
Okay.
But of course, cutting 24% of our project out to accommodate everything else has brought us below optimal production also. So it's just one of the things that comes with the territory.
Okay. And then the second question, or the next question that I had, was about the planned meadow or grass, or I'm not sure what you want to call it, the grassy area. I was looking through the planting schedule, and some of those plant species could develop a fair amount of height, and again, be shading those panels. And I see that the panels are intended to be installed with the lowest elevation, the lowest height of them being at two to three feet above the ground. And I wonder how you might go about mowing to keep them down, keep the grasses down so that your panels are operating to their optimum?
Well, to be, to walk you through the process, when we originally put this plan in 15 months ago, our plan was to plant very low-growth, pollinator-friendly mix, which we do at all of our sites. As a result of Mr. Price's recommendations, the seed mix has now been changed and will likely grow faster and taller than we normally like, which will require additional cutting and landscaping during the course of the season. Would have preferred not to go that route, but it's a recommendation by Mr. Price, and we've accommodated all of his recommendations.
Yeah, I'm just looking at two to three feet of height at the lowest, at the lower edge of the panels and wondering how that might get mowed and...
Well, as you might experience in your own day-to-day life, it takes quite a while for your front lawn to get to two to three feet tall.
Well, that's the interim period that I'm also concerned about, and establishing growing there.
And that's why, that's why he wants us to use that seed mix, because it's the most easily established.
Is there going to be temporary irrigation on the site during construction?
Not likely.
I just, I worry with the conditions that we've seen, with the exception of one summer recently, most summers, it dries out, and I worry about establishment of that grassy area. And that's the interim period that I worry about most with this project, between the start of construction and the end of construction. So I think that's all I've got for right now.
Thank you, ma'am. So with that seed mix change that Mr. Price suggested, does that mean that you're not adopting the best practices for pollinator-friendly solar array plantings?
There will still be pollinator-friendly within the mix.
But we don't know what that is. We're referring to it as mix. Do we know what's in the mix?
I can get you the specs if you'd like.
I'm just, you know, one of the huge concerns is, you know, and rightly so to an extent, is the wildlife, you know, and the surrounding area. And I was lucky enough to come across this document from the Clean Energy Extension, and it was very enlightening about how important it is to adopt the pollinator-friendly mix.
It's a real focus here in Massachusetts.
Yes, very much so.
University of Massachusetts.
At Amherst, yes.
Very, very involved in it. And that's where our original mix came from, UMass Amherst. I did a number of projects out in the Berkshires, western part of the state. We brought in the consultant, testified in front of the planning boards, and we adopted it. That's the specific mix that Mr. Price has asked us to move away from. So I guess what I can do for you is get specifications of what he wants with the pollinator-friendly component to it.
Right. So I guess his concern for changing the mix, which I think ties into Jane's concern, is the fact that we need something that's going to go grow fast to stabilize the ground after it's been disturbed. But is it going to have any ongoing benefit?
So to backtrack for half a second, the reason I was asking about the two to three feet of the lower side, and that's the underside.
Mm-hmm.
But the low end of the panels, which are tilted, was at a fairly low elevation, and this was in the, in the planning board's website, was this mix.
Bring that up.
And it calls it a four-foot mix, so...
Yeah, well, he calls it a pollinator-four-foot mix.
Yeah, so at four feet, then you've got an issue with needing to mow a bit to keep it down below the...
Yep.
Right there's the, that's what was in the site.
Okay. Charlie, do you have anything to...
A couple of things, if I might, Mr. Chairman.
Absolutely.
Let's go back to something that Mr. Baptiste alluded to, and I know that the Horsley-Witten report was focused a lot on groundwater, rightly so, because I think that the, one of the impacts of the project could be an impact on either septic systems and/or wells that are still occupied or used by the residents in that area, because not everybody is tied into the fire district water system, and they still occupy their property with wells for drinking purposes. So it's an important factor to consider, the groundwater changes, if any. And the Horsley-Witten report suggested that the groundwater differences might be a tenth of a foot or an inch, inch and a half, something like that, which, when you think of it in that realm, doesn't mean much. However, I think there's another component of it which the Horsley-Witten report does not talk about, and that is the impact of the effects on the surface of the ground and what happens when that ground is significantly disturbed the way that it will be. Unless the contractor has a magic formula for pulling stumps out of the ground from 12- and 18-inch pine trees that will not change the characteristics of the soil for many feet around that stump, I think you're going to find that the majority of that hill, from top to bottom, wherever those stumps are removed, will have an impact on that soil, anywhere from the surface down to maybe 24, possibly 36 inches below grade. Because if you've ever seen a white pine, when it actually topples over and takes the root ball with it...
Leaves a big hole.
It leaves a big hole.
Yeah.
So in some instances, and in other projects which have come before the town, there has been a restriction on actually ripping the stumps out. But in fact, the stumps had to be, in fact, when they go in there with the kind of a machine that I've seen operate, they cut the stumps or cut the trees off with a large set of shears, grab the tree as a whole, and walk it over to a chipper, chip the entire tree up. But now the stump is still left in the ground. You've got to remove the stump somehow, and when you do that, that soil gets disturbed. My concern remains, as it did early on, that I'm not sure that with that sort of a circumstance happening, that you're comparing apples to apples when you compare the groundwater conditions before construction as opposed to what it would be after construction. Because once you've disturbed that upper layer, and if you remember the soils reports that come out of the U.S. Department of Agriculture, they're saying that there is subsurface water in some areas on the site, as close as 20 inches to the ground surface, in some places, three feet down. The test pits which were done, which were scattered sparsely throughout the site, sort of verify that. So my concern is that we've looked at the studies for groundwater, but that we haven't significantly evaluated the impact of the construction on the soil profile that will have a subsequent impact on the ability of that soil to allow the water to permeate down through it, the way that it does today, however impervious that soil may be. It talks about the soils as being of a glacial till origin, which means there's a lot of fine powdery stuff mixed in with the rocks and various gradations of soil throughout it. It's not like going up on a charge pond road or up into the Plymouth wildlands or something like that and seeing that sandy soil. It's not the same type at all. There's a little bit of evidence in that southwest corner where they did take a test pit where one of the drainage basins will be. But in that area, the test pit said that the water that they encountered was 20 inches down, I think it was 20 inches. And they assigned a perk rate for 13 minutes per inch, which means they must have done the perk right close to the surface of the ground, or they would have had to de-water the hole, one of the two. So my concern still is, what will happen once you've stripped all that vegetation off? And even if you haven't changed the general topography of the site, you're still going to fill in those holes, mix it with whatever soil is around it, and then superimpose eight inches of loam on top of it, which I don't believe actually exists on the site. If you've dug a transsept down through the soil, on any soil that has a large growth of white pine such as that, you'll find maybe that much very sandy loam on top, and then it goes into a bright yellow subsoil under that, then down into the parent material that's below that. So when you strip that topsoil off, you're not going to have a nice mound of nice quality loam that will address the issue of managing that seed when you plant it, making sure that there's plenty of moisture in that ground for that seed to grow. So that having been said, I would think that a soil scientist who very specifically knows what happens to that soil structure could evaluate those conditions perhaps a little bit differently than Horsley and Witten did. Because if you remember, I asked Mr. Price about that, whether he thought there would be any changes in the ability of the soil to transmit that water, and he said he didn't think so. But he didn't provide any evidence that said, no, we know it won't change. I'm skeptical of that, knowing the conditions that are there and the impacts that surface water, as well as erosion, will have on the site and to the people on the outside perimeters of it. So that is a concern. With respect to the monitoring, monitoring would be done for two purposes. The first would be as a requirement of your operation and maintenance plan during construction. And that's a requirement that you do monitor the conditions of the ground on a regular basis, and you do inspect the areas after a major storm to be sure that the temporary areas that you've erected there to control runoff have not been breached, that if they have been, you repair them, you'll pull back any sediment that's allowed to flow outside the area of construction, and so forth. So yeah, that's something that needs to be done during and right after the construction process is completed. However, monitoring in order to have any real impact, to be able to evaluate what the impacts to the abutting landowners will be after that project is finished, assuming a life of 20 years on that site. If you stop the monitoring after two years, you might as well not do it at all. What you need in terms of a monitoring program is a means of determining if there are any adverse impacts that you see as a result of changes in the soil, not the soil hydrology, but the hydrology of what happens in the site after the runoff is coming off of it, after the panels are up, after the vegetation has been planted. Are there long-term effects which will perhaps be an issue for those people that have either water well problems or septic problems? So I think it should be a regular monitoring program. That's not to say that you need to go out there and take a measurement in the well every week. It could be done, over the long term, it could be done once a month, perhaps a little bit more often during the real spring season of the year, say from latter part of April into June. That's when we get our wettest times of the year and when the groundwater conditions will change the most rapidly. So that might be a time of year to really look at it intently to be sure that there's no issues developing. But if you stop the monitoring program after two years, it isn't going to give you any kind of an indication as to what's happening beyond that time. So my recommendation would be, whatever monitoring program you establish, that it's for the lifetime of the project. I think it can be done in a reasonable manner that won't necessarily break the bank. I can't imagine that it would be as much as what has been suggested to you if you do it properly. And we're talking about monitoring three wells after construction is done. So you know what the elevation of the well is, that's not going to change. So you go there, you pull the cap off the well, you put a measuring stick down the well, and you measure the elevation of the water, and you report it. That would take all of a few minutes to go to each one of those wells and then give you the report of what you see in the changes of the groundwater. So I can't imagine it would be quite that expensive. The other issue would be with respect to the planting and the bonds for the trees. I would think, as Ms. Gleason has suggested, that maybe there should be something there in terms of the planting of the grass as well. Because if it gets planted even in the late fall of the year, there's going to be relatively little germination between then and the following spring. Depending on what we get for rainfall, it'll either generate well or it'll stay sparse in certain areas. And until that is well protected, the surface is well protected, I think you need to be in there on a regular basis to check that and replant it, do whatever you have to do to maintain that surface, because if you don't, you'll get erosion. So those are just my concerns going forward.
Thank you, Charlie.
Okay, cool. Okay. I might, one other thing if I might, Mr. Chairman, just with respect to the buffers that we're talking about. It's, it's not so much the distance of the buffer we're talking about in expanding a buffer around the DeMello property from, say, 50 feet to 81 or whatever it is. It's a matter of the visual impact. So whether the buffer has to be 75 feet or 175 feet, it's the visual impact that is always a concern for any of these projects. It's why some of the projects on Tyhonet Road, for example, had a minimum 150-foot buffer from Tyhonet Road to where those first panels were. So I think that, when I put, in my last letter, I suggested that that buffer in back of Mr. DeMello's property be increased, even if it meant taking out a couple of rows of panels to increase that. If that's not the kind of thing that the applicant wants to do, I would suggest that additional plantings or some sort of a mechanism be put in the special permit where you do evaluate the impact of the buffer well before it gets finally established and before everybody leaves the site, and decide how much more of a buffer there should be in order to protect that visual impact that you'll see. It's probably less along the road now going in because he's got a bend in the road, and unless you're looking quick when you travel by, you're probably not going to see much. But I think that one property in particular will have much more of an impact to it than others in, around that area.
Okay. Thank you, Charlie.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
May I ask Charlie to apply on something else as well?
Sure.
Charlie, there were a few pieces of information submitted by Annie Hayes that are in, in the materials available on the website. One has to do with the question of projected level of precipitation, another to do with the water budget. I don't know if you had a chance to look at that, interpret it, and whether you have any opinions that, that you'd like to share with us on that. I was able to understand the general gist, but was curious about your reaction to it.
To be honest with you, I haven't read that particular document, but with respect to the, I assume it's with reference to the intensity of rainfall that's used in calculating the stormwater runoff and so forth. Initially, those, those numbers were on the order from a two-year storm, it was about 3.2 inches per hour, I think, for a 24-hour storm, and it went up to about seven inches per hour for a 100-year storm. Those were early-on calculations. I think the Atlantic Design calculations go beyond that and actually are using a higher number, because I know that some of the numbers that are now coming out of the publications are increasing those numbers. And I saw one evaluation, it might have been in some of the documents that they sent, which for the 100-year storm, it was 8.6. So that's a significant increase over the original seven inches per hour that used to be there. So I will look at that, and I'll give you a comment on that, Sherry.
Thank you.
Anything else from the board before I invite the public to speak? No? Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I will now open it up for public comment. I will, I will ask very politely that you bring only new material. If you begin to, to go over material that we've heard several times, I will ask you to, to leave. So having said that, Annie?
Annie Hayes, 52 Farmers Lane. Thank you for all your comments about soils, about water. What I see with all of this, and I've talked to Mr. Price as well about it, is that this project has been recently looked at hydrogeologically for stormwater. And we are in the most severe drought that I've ever been a part of, and I think globally we're also hearing the same. In France, they are not running some nuclear reactors because they don't have enough cool water to cool the reactors. This is a very drastic situation. First, I would like to say I have the data for the wells, and I have said this a couple of times, it's not absolutely new, but when you see it, it's different. I will make it a little bit more legible. But it's, you know, I got to redo the addition, but it's something like 211 out of 259 households have wells. They didn't choose to connect because connecting to public water was expensive, and they also liked their well water, as do I, because of the nutrients. And although Mr. Price says he doesn't think the nitrogen level will be increased with deforestation, the nutrients will be gone because it will not be going through the leaf litter filter, through the soil, et cetera. Mark Rasmussen at the induction of the Horseshoe Mill Pond said exactly the same thing. The animals in the river, and he's very keen on the water from the watershed of Farring Hill, working to clean the Weewee Antic, which is still very necessary, the water is filled with nutrients for the animals. They're talking about, you know, those alewives are, you know, going upstream, they need nutrients, and that also comes down. I did citizen science this week on my solar panels. I know you don't measure air temperature by putting on a direct surface, you have to subtract about 15 degrees Fahrenheit. But since all the samples were used at the same evaluation with putting the thermometer right on the surface. The solar panels on my barn were at 120 degrees, and that was at noon on the 3rd of July. I'm sorry. When I put the thermometer on the meadow, and this is the kind of meadow, it's a pollinator meadow, it's more than a pollinator meadow, it's a meadow that's been there for multiple generations, it's an old farm. And the, here's a picture of the meadow compared to the forest. The forest was 76 degrees on the forest floor, the meadow was at noon, the meadow was 120 degrees, and it was trying to get off the thermometer, couldn't go any higher. So these are extreme temperatures, and I have the data for the months of January rainfall through July. August is probably going to be even worse. But you can see from this, this is the average over time, over years, 5.7 average for the month of January. Here, it doesn't ever get above one inch, and it's only two blips for the month. All of the months are like that, and they give the summation of the precipitation. Here's March. Isn't March when Mr. Price did his well drills? This is the flat line for the precipitation for March. So there's that. This is one of the reasons that I am so opposed to this, that turning this, which is a wonderful vegetative wetlands, wells, nurturing...
We've made, we've made the argument about taking the trees down, we understand all that, so please move on.
Okay. Another aspect of deforestation is that there's more and more research about the cloud cover that's lost when you destroy forests, there's a lot of writing about it, and the cloud cover is what you need for the water cycle. And you might say, well, if you lose the trees on Farring Hill, so what? It's a small drop in the bucket. But it's happening globally, and there are, where's my data sheet? Billions of trees, 15 billion trees are cut down every year, and that's why the United Nations, and also, I think it was, I can't remember what I want to say, but you know, the most recent evaluation of climate crisis that was done internationally, they, you have to stop deforestation, you have to stop it.
If you could wrap it up, Forrest, and I'd appreciate it.
Maybe. I'm trying.
Okay.
I will put this in, in a better, pollinator meadow. My, I have fields of milkweed for the monarchs. They were gone by probably, I don't know, the first week in July. I am just seeing monarchs now flitting through the meadow. There is an increased disconnect between the blooms because of the temperature and the insects, butterflies, and all the insects that are so important, not just butterflies, all the insects. There's a specialist who, specialists on pollinator, bees in particular, but all pollinators at UMass, for eight years, he's been doing a pollinator study right in Dartmouth, and he says, you don't just introduce the right seeds for one species or this or that, it's the whole biome that matters. It's the whole biome. And if you destroy it, it's a real problem. One more thing, last thing.
30 seconds, please.
Saltwater intrusion is happening, and that means that the, the saltwater and flooding, this is a 2021 map from FEMA, the saltwater is coming in, and it's not just rolling over the land, it's also pushing underwater, and it's pushing up, upriver, that's the only way I can think of it, I'm looking at this river. It's pushing the fresh water up. There's a balance now, but as the sea level rises, there's more force, it's just, you know, basics, basic physics in a way, it's understandable. This is Little Farring Hill here. There's not much upland that you can see in the rest of this map. It is precious, it is very precious. So the calculation of how many miles off the road is a very narrow view of that. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ann.
Kathy Papalardo, Farring Hill Road, also president of the Wareham Land Trust. I've been a steward for the Farring Hill Conservation property since the town acquired it. I know there are box turtles on that property. Yes, they are not currently listed as endangered, but in the state of Massachusetts, they are a species of special concern. They are on the Farring Hill property, and it is documented. I also know that a Plymouth red-bellied cooter was in West Wareham in the Weewee Antic River and has been documented. And the other concern is, it looks like in looking at the plans, the Arborvitae are only going around the southern portion of the property. Does this mean when people are out on the conservation land and they look to the west, they may be seeing panels because of the elevation? Those are concerns that we have, but those two turtles, they do exist there. Thank you.
Eric Lintle of 15 Squirrel Island Road. I live just behind the residence along Farring Hill. I want to implore you to talk to the Conservation Commission on this. Both of you, both these parties have to communicate. Several of us were at that Conservation Committee meeting, and I would say they were very concerned, not okay with it. They had some very hard questions, they've got more questions to ask, and it does pertain about the water issues, the main thing. They were very concerned and wanted to focus on the watershed off the north side. But they had some very concerning questions that I think are going, should be looked at and listened to. And they're also looking forward to hearing more from Charlie's written reports, advice on this as well. Just a couple of things, few things. There's been a lot of information sent back and forth from both parties, letters, information, diagrams, photographs, and I think all of that is good and important information. I don't, I'd be surprised if any of it is false information. Mr. Shanahan has written some rebuttal letters about my remarks pertaining to endangered species and possible cultural, historical, and archaeological, stating there's no evidence. That's untrue. I've sent you enough documentation on that. We've had people, bankers, had people move their house because of the ancient trail, there's hard evidence. The cart path that's on the hill has never been addressed yet. In reference to the endangered species, I looked up Mr. Shanahan's site, which is the U.S. Fish Wildlife IPAC. That's Information for Planning and Consultation to Integrate the Environmental Review Process Into Your Project Design. Your job, a citizen's job, a resident's job is to be concerned about every issue. His job's to get the project through. So the questions we have are important. He's made it very clear that he's followed the bylaws, all requests from the board, he's answered questions, he's done a good job about that. Water is the big issue, the runoff. The hydrogeological report, I've listened to Mr. Price twice now give that presentation. Lot of data, lot of stuff we don't understand. He tried his best, we've done our best to try to understand it too. But listening to him, there were more ifs, ands, and buts, and possibilities, no 100% guarantees. There's a lot of guesswork in that. Good guesswork, but it's guesswork. And we're talking about these septic systems that'll be vulnerable, monitor them for a couple of years, see what happens. Hell, the hill's going to be stripped already and the panels will be up. Why monitor anymore? If it's got to be monitored, that means there's issues already. There's big questions we have. This thing should not go forward just because of that. The endangered species, I've got new information, specific maps, that picture you've got, that's a baby red-bellied cooter, taken in May on my back deck, crossing along my property. I have all these photographs I sent you from the rat snake, the box turtles, all of these critters come through there. They're all around Farring Hill, and to say they're not on the hill is ridiculous. The information called the Rare Species Viewer, which is under the Mass Endangered Species Act Regulatory Review. And on that, you can go to a specific town, not just, here's a map of southeast Mass and maybe there's an animal right there. But you can see the eastern box turtle on here, and I'm going to, I'll send these new documents as well. But it shows specifically the town and the general area, and the eastern box turtle's there, the northern diamondback terrapin is there, and it all, in Farring Hill, who's to say it's not there? We're doing research, we've seen these things that are there. We've done archaeological, we've done the endangered species, we've watched from the watershed what's happening. The research they do is a lot of database, comes off of government sites. We're on the ground, we walk the hill, we walk these sites. We see where the water comes and gathers and floods, doesn't flood. Our information is true, it's, it's not false, and to say there's no evidence, I really take offense to that. I believe, and his evidence is true. The thing is, as I pointed out before, on these sites, you can find information for or against anything, and it's where you got to look. If you're looking for environmental concerns, that's what we're looking at. If you're looking for, going to construct the project, and going to talk about high-priority habitats, there's no high-priority habitat on Farring Hill or in general area. But all of these state, these critters are there, there is an issue with rare endangered species in that, on the hill, around the hill, all in our neighborhoods. So you have to make a hard choice that's coming up. He's presented good information, we've presented good information. Water's the main issue, what's going to happen to that watershed, the Weewee Antic? Deep down, we know, we know what, we don't want to see that forest cut. I'm sure everybody here doesn't want to see the forest cut down. I'm sure everybody here doesn't want to see the forest cut down. So there's a lot of holes in this project. There's a lot of too many ifs, ands, and buts still, not 100%. One last little thing about the turtles. I remember when Walmart was being constructed, the big upheaval about the turtles crossing that road, et cetera. You know, they're going to put in a turtle tunnel and all this stuff. Where'd all that go? Nowhere. Nothing happened. I think it's a good thing they're going to, they're, on his site, they had the long-eared bat, the monarch butterfly, and the cooter came up on IPAC. And he's addressed the turtle thing. He's going to bring in the bylaws. Good. What's going to happen when that hill's gone? These are habitats. Some of them live in the wet area. Their nesting areas on high ground. Ferring Hill's high ground. You have a hard choice to make. Make it good.
Thank you. Anybody online that needs to speak? This'll wrap up comment for this evening on this. Again, like I mentioned, please try to stick to new information.
I have, I have four distinct things. Nancy McHale, Ferring Hill Road. One of the things that was brought up this morning, or this afternoon, evening, was that the trees within the buffer are perhaps too tall and would be allowed to, would cast some shade on the panels. In other projects, we've heard the proponents of the project suggest that they would actually top those trees that are in the buffer. And I was just wanting to make sure that that was not a possibility here. I don't know if that's a question or not, you know, so that they would be brought down so that they wouldn't cast shade, at which point you would end up with telephone poles for your buffer. The other question was of the fire response, if indeed there was a fire within the fenced area, the chain-linked fenced area, was to just let it burn? And if it was outside of the fenced area, to fight the fire as normal? How would the damage to that area be assessed? And how would the possible contamination to the water be evaluated? And what restitution could possibly be made to the town and the citizens for contamination of the water sources? Those are all questions there. And I'm sorry to circle back, but I seriously don't understand the three basins that are proposed for stormwater or for runoff. Are these infiltration basins, at which point, my understanding, which is minimal, will go back into the ground? Or are they collection-retention basins, which are holding tanks basically to be evaporated? Because if they're retention basins, then is that starving the rest of the wetlands that are surrounding this property, specifically on the Ferring Hill Conservation area? Are we starving them of the moisture that they're used to getting? And finally, Mr. Shanahan had, during the Conservation Commission meeting, had referred to a narrative for the project. And I haven't been able to find any type of summary document that talks about the narrative. So I was just wondering if that's available someplace.
And that, I'm sorry, that conversation was where?
At the conserva, the last Conservation Commission.
And there's nothing on the Conservation Commission's website as far as documentation goes?
No. Okay. Thank you. I appreciate it.
All right. I think we've got even more homework to do.
Mr. Chairman, I think I can answer one of the questions with regard to the three basins.
The basins.
Rich, chime in if I'm not correct. These are not infiltration basins, they have not taken that into consideration. What they do is they're, they're receiving areas for the runoff, and there is a discharge pipe which has basically been set at the bottom of the basin so that it will allow the release of runoff from that basin the moment that the water reaches the elevation of that pipe. And even if the water flows up inside the basin temporarily, it will continue to flow out into the discharge of the stone which is outside the basin perimeter. And that's the case for each of the three that they've got shown. So it's, it's not a real retention basin, it's a detention basin to allow the water to run out of it over a given period of time. So that unless the pipe plugs up, there will not be the storage of any water. And it's not their intention that it act as an infiltration basin, principally because of the soil conditions, I think, and the presence of high, what I call groundwater.
Yeah.
Whether or not that's the same groundwater that was found in the borings is perhaps questionable, nevertheless, it's there. So is that generally accurate?
Okay. Thank you, Charlie. Ken?
Do you want Horsey Witten to come back? Do you want Neil Price back again?
I think, considering the fact that it seems like pretty much everybody on the board has concerns about, about the ground and the water and where it's going to go, and we don't completely understand it yet, I would say yes.
All right. I'd like to get the, the report, the document that identifies the box turtles on the property. For the groundwater monitoring, we're going to need the criteria. And we're going to have to work out some legal easement that allows the planting of trees and grasses as needed for the landscape plan as well.
Okay.
That's all.
So you have homework too, then?
Exactly.
All right, good. I'd like to get one of your homework, not mine. Okay. Well, that was a lot of information again.
Mr. Chairman, one comment, if I may.
Yeah, if you...
It would appear that Mr. Price is destined to be back before this board. May I bother the Planning Department to coordinate with the Conservation Commission?
I was just going to suggest the same thing.
So that they don't have the excuse that they weren't invited.
I think that's an excellent suggestion. So on this subject, I would entertain a motion to continue the public hearing. Monique, our next, our next meeting's the 22nd. And that's probably not enough time to accomplish... Ken, is that enough time to accomplish what we need to accomplish?
I think so.
You think so? Okay. Is that, that meeting already starting to fill up? Where are we at with items for the agenda? I left my planner at home, so I can't look at it.
For the 27th, I think we might have a couple of ANRs on the agenda. We have O'Root 25 as well as 5 Dodie Street. So...
I think that's jamming it up a little bit.
And I remind you that I will not be here then.
Yeah, not yet, right.
And I can't dial in, so I'll have to watch the video.
Well, no, I'm going to suggest, as long as you have no objections, that we skip over the meeting of the 22nd. Because it is a short time to get all of this done in preparation, and the agenda's already started to book up. So we can go, if the timeframe will allow us, we can go to the meeting after that and do, I'd kind of like to do pretty much like we did tonight, where set the meeting specifically or as close to specifically to this subject matter as possible.
Because I'm getting used to saying Mr. King, if that's what the board wants to do.
Okay. Well, I appreciate your working with us on this. As, you know, I think as everybody can tell, this is a very emotional subject, and we want to make sure we get it right for everybody.
Mr. Chair, so the meeting that would be after the 22nd would be on Labor Day, the 5th. So I don't know what this board typically does during holidays.
I can assure you, we won't be here on Labor Day, the 5th.
Oh, just kidding. No, you're, you're the 2nd and the 4th. Okay, great. So on September 12th.
Okay, September the 12th.
Yeah.
All right, that sounds good. So I would entertain a motion to continue this public hearing to the regularly scheduled Planning Board meeting of September 12, 2022. We have a motion by Sam Corbett, seconded by Mike Baptiste. All in favor? Sherry?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Jane?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Carl?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you.
Thank you all. Have a good Labor Day.
Thank you, you too.
Thank you.
All right. Before we move on to the next subject, I'd like to take a couple of minutes.
Before we move on to that next subject, through you to Mr. Buckland, would it be useful for us to prepare a list of questions that we know we want Mr. Price to address so that he doesn't show up at that meeting and then we ask him questions and he says...
Absolutely. Then we could, we could coordinate the questions as well, too, if there's something overlaps, and make sure it's addressed in some way.
And perhaps you could ask Mr. Pichette to coordinate with Conservation Commission so that they have questions.
Yeah, we can get all the questions from the two, from the two groups.
We just can't keep dragging this out.
Yeah.
Absolutely not.
I mean, we can, but it's...
It doesn't do, it's not doing anybody any good.
Okay, so that...
We'll be coordinated with CONCOM and we'll get them with the questions beforehand, which means that I'd like to have questions from all of you as soon as possible.
We'll do our best. Some of our questions may be spontaneous, though. But we'll do our best.
Okay, thanks. All right. Before we move on to other business, I would entertain a quick break.
I motion that we take a five-minute bio break, or whatever else you choose to do.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Motion by Carla Schultz, seconded by Jane Gleason. We'll see you all in a couple of minutes. Hello? Okay, everyone? Hello?
Right in the room. Right, please.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we reopen the Wareham Planning Board meeting of August 8th.
Motion by Carla Schultz, seconded by Sam Corbett. All those in favor? Sherry?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Jane?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Carl?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
And for the record, that's at 7:50.
Okay. Amendment to Article 6, Density and Dimension Zoning Bylaw Public Hearing, sponsored by the Planning Board. So the Planning Board has had their discussions, have made revisions. So the Planning Board has had their discussions, have made revisions that we feel are appropriate, mostly in just layout and language. It's my understanding that the Zoning Board of Appeals has some comments that they would like to address, so if you folks want to come up.
For the record, my name is Nazir Al Flassi. I'm the chairman of the zoning board.
My name's Richard Sampa. I'm a member of the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Tori Larson, associate member of the zoning board.
Hi, Mr. Chairman, members. We did look at few stuff. Are you set on this or we could change some things? Possible to change a couple of things on... It is what it is.
Well, the Planning Board always has an open mind, as long as what the changes are being proposed makes sense.
Okay. Couple of things on... That came before us. It was a little troubling on Article 6 on the strip commercial. Let me see that.
I have Article 6 printed if you need it.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's okay. I'm old school. I love paper.
All right.
All right.
On 623, if you look at the strip commercial, the minimum lot area, it says one family, 30,000; two family, 45,000; other residential use is 20,000. Then it says non-residential use, 30,000, star 1. And you look down, star 1 explains itself for a motel, 1 acre plus 3,000 for each additional unit in excess of 12. On other residential use, 20,000, it's a misprint. It should have also a star 2, like you have in, for instance, in the MR30. If you go to the MR30, other residential use, if you look with me, it says the first dwelling, 30,000; second dwelling, second family dwelling, 45,000; other residential use is 30,000, star 2. You go to star 2 on the bottom, it's for each additional use. We've had applicants came before us with 20,000 square feet and they want to pay... They want to put six houses. Perfect example, behind Perry's Ice Cream, I forget the name of that street, this is like only 1 and 1/2 acre there and there's 10 duplexes there. It was granted back in 2018 by your board. And it's MR30. It should have... It's a strip commercial. It should really and truly have only like three units. And they were granted 10 units based on this bylaw. And we had this matter in front of us in the strip commercial. A gentleman came in. He can have three units by right. He wanted six because he said, "Oh, I have 30,000 square feet. I only need 20,000 and I can fit wherever we can, wherever I can," which we disagree. We should fix this 20,000 and add the star 2 or star 3 and add in the bottom, just like it is in the MR30, for each additional unit. Because it's open... It opens us if it ever goes to COA, we definitely will lose. So that's something if you can consider.
Okay.
Okay. Also, we had issue and setbacks in R130s, on a residential down R130. Back in 2005, a new bylaw came in. They changed the front... They set the front setback to 100 feet, which we understand if you have 130,000 square feet. They set the rear setback to 50 and the sides, I think, to 50 feet as well.
Can you reiterate where you are? What was...
In a R130.
R130.
In a R130. In R130. Where's the R130 here? Where is it here? That's so confusing, these new... It's right here. So if you notice, a front setback is 100. One family dwelling, 20. And other residential use is 20 for like a shed. Now, keep in mind, a lot of lots in Charge Pond area, in East Wareham, Shangala, this area, this is all in the R130. And these lots are 10,000 square feet. So these folks who comes before us, they want to put simply a shed and they want 10 feet from the side or they want to add a garage, which their bylaw used to be back then, they can't. They need a variance and they need to spend...
Look at existing small lots.
Where?
628.
628.
We have the changes. 628.
So it's got the lot area range in square feet and there's Category 1, 2, and 3, which are different sized lots.
But I don't think these on the R130.
Lawfully existing lots in residential districts. So R130 or MR130, R130 is a residential district, so this would apply.
This is great. So why people... Why applicants still coming before us and spending so much money to put a shed or a garage?
I don't know.
Can you answer that question?
The information's there. They just... I think the thing that happens oftentimes is people get to a certain point in the bylaw and they say, "Oh, there's my answer." And they stop looking.
Well, we act...
Keep going.
I understand. We act upon the commissioner letter. We've had different changes. I bring it to his attention because I feel bad...
This has been in there.
Oh, good. Well, this is solved, so this is good.
So this is actually the new one. This is a new format. This is the new format. The old format, maybe they're not... It's right here, 628. It looks like this instead, which is maybe a little more confusing to read, but it's there.
Okay, this is great. I bring it to the commissioner's attention. So that makes a lot our job easier and makes people...
Absolutely. I mean, 100-foot setback on a 5,000-square-foot lot doesn't work.
Well, I... This is great. We did talk about changing this many times and we changed it from 100 to 50 for a while and then, and I guess it's lost. We changed commissioners and it gets lost. So another thing, on Section 1380. Section 1380, 1381-3. I recommend that we change the word that says setback to zoning, instead of setback requirement.
Wait, is that Article 13?
Gene, that's a different article.
Yes.
Okay.
You only want to change on 6?
Right now, we're talking about 6.
We're just working 6.
So you don't want to change... You don't want to look at anything else?
Go ahead and make your comment.
All right. In section... Article 1380. If you look at 1381, number 3, the building... This is about small lots. The language is very... And if you read number 3, it says, "The buildings to be located thereon are to be setback equal to the setback in effect at the time of lot creation or endorsement. For lots laid out prior to November 19, 1951, structure must meet setback requirement." I recommend to change this word to zoning requirement. So if it's all possible, if you could change that word.
Well, and if you notice, it says 1370, 1381, 1380, 1391. So there are lots of Scrivener's errors in here.
There's a lot what?
Of Scrivener's errors.
I know, but this is a very dangerous error. Think about it.
Okay.
I really don't want to discuss much about it.
Well, the subject on the floor is Article 6.
Okay, so you don't want to discuss this? Okay. And that's it. So the most important one, the other residential use, the 20,000. We have other issues, too, in like accessory structure, but I guess it's not in Article 6. As you all know, there's something should be taken care of as well.
There's a lot of things in the zoning that need to be taken care of.
We had somebody with 900-square-feet house, put a garage, 7,500 square feet, and we couldn't say no. That something has to be addressed. So...
And when did that take place?
Should we call that one? Charlie, remember that one?
Over in West Wareham?
About...
Yeah, the project ahead was, I think, was on Paper Mill Road?
Paper Mill Road. Paper Mill Road. About a year and a half.
And if...
Oh, it's Pierceville Road, not Paper Mill. Pierceville.
Pierceville.
Pierceville, yeah.
It's just interesting. If something that glaring of a misuse of a zoning came about, how come nobody's heard about it?
Because it's by right.
I understand that, but if you had a concern like you do now, I think this is one of the challenges that we have in this town, is none of the boards talk to one another. There's no transfer of information whatsoever.
Well, we've talked about it many times. I've talked about it with the previous commissioner. We're supposed to change it. Mr. Buckland's aware of this. The gentleman, the way we know, he came before us because it's only allowed height 20, 20 feet. The gentleman came before us, he said, "Okay, if you don't give it to me..." He wanted to make like a gable and go like 26 feet.
But that was for snow safety.
Right. So we could have said...
He was worried about caving in with a low pitch.
Right. So we could have said, "No, he could still build it," but we figure it looks better and safer, but we couldn't say no because he could still have it.
I understand the reasoning for not saying no. I think what the point I'm trying to make is, as we move forward and we run into these little hiccups in the zoning, a little bit of information... If we're the ones who are responsible for correcting what we think are fallacies in the zoning and you stumble across something that is an obvious example...
Well, here's the deal.
You don't hear a thing about it.
Well, let me tell you what happened. We had a great, long list with Commissioner Requina, a lot of change. I can't even think about them. Every hearing, when we run across something, I write it down, everybody else write it down, bring it to him. He made a nice, a lot of changes. And here you go, he's gone. He took the list with him. So now we starting back from scratch, kind of.
Is it... Ken, is it outside the realm of possibility to have a shared Google Doc between boards or is that a violation of meeting laws?
You could have a shared document that you work on as a draft document, a workshop type of...
So if we had a shared Google Doc that the boards all have access to and you trip across something like this, you just, you know, you could have, "Here's the zoning by law in question. Here's the concern. Here's the situation that brought it to light a day. And here's the owner of the issue, i.e. the Planning Board or the Conservation Commission or whomever." And if we were all watching it and adding to it on a daily, weekly, monthly basis, now we could start sharing information between the boards and stuff like this doesn't just get left on the sidelines because somebody left town.
Right.
So, I mean, we're all... We're all about making the zoning better for the town. I mean, that's why we all donate our time.
Exactly. You absolutely right, Mr. Chairman. But we didn't... To be honest with you, we saw the right channel, go to the commissioner and the commissioner will write it down and present it to you.
Which never took place.
Which never took place.
He never talked to us at all.
So now, if you wish, if the board wishes, every time a hearing come across and we have an issue, we could say, "Okay, Monique, write down a letter, send it to the planning board."
Well, I think that'd be a great start. At least now we've got some information transferred.
This way it doesn't go different channels and it get lost somewhere.
Right. Yeah, we'll just blame Monique when it disappears.
Yeah, I know. We're coming in here to just try and help and appreciate it. We're trying to be professional. We also would appreciate not to have funny faces and little gestures back and forth. Let's be professional in the town and correct this all. And I think there's a lot of need to get these things straight, to avoid the complications and to go through meetings like we had a couple of weeks ago where we got yelled at by the public over things that we can't control. So we'd like to have it a little more organized.
Well, that's...
And I agree that this is a very good start to be able to talk, but also be treated as professionals in here without faces being made would also be a start.
I think that's a little bit on the adolescent's side, but duly noted.
Thank you.
Do we have anything else on Article 6 tonight or...
6? 6? If it's all possible, the FAR 30% is very small for the Wareham Village and Onset Village. 30% FAR is really small area. Maybe we could increase it to 50. Because nowadays, back in the day, these were all cottages. Now, a lot of people, a lot of families fixing them, more family grow, the kids, the grandkids, and it's really small... 30% is little, so it should be increased to 50 because we run through this a lot.
But I think that it probably bears more consideration because you're talking about getting rid of pervious ground surface by doing that. And I mean, maybe the argument to be made in that case is that maybe Onset Village is not the place if you need more space.
But the FAR would go like, not the impervious, it would go the floor area ratio, like for two stories. Like it does not... We're not talking about lot coverage.
It does affect lot coverage, as far as I understand. Maybe I'm misunderstanding it.
Yeah, there's lot coverage and there's FAR. So for instance, 10,000 square feet, a lot coverage would be, say, 50%. But FAR, if it's 30, that's mean you could do 3,000 square feet on one...
Two stories.
Two stories.
Okay. So FAR is referring to both floors.
Exactly.
Not just that coverage.
Right.
Okay. And I think I looked at that and it was not clear to me in the definitions because I tried to discern exactly that, the difference between lot coverage and FAR.
I was confused, too, at the beginning. I learned it. So it has nothing to do with the impervious and the lot coverage.
Thank you. That helps. Me understand it better. I was trying to figure that out, the difference between the two, so...
I think this is where we take some time for some urban design as well, too, because an FAR of .5 is low for a village center. You want to have your intensive development in the center of town and spread out from there. And intensive development means that you want to have a density that probably approximates 100% FAR, a FAR of 1 in the downtown.
I totally appreciate the wanting to be dense in the downtown areas. Absolutely. I get that.
Other than that, in 6, I mean, nothing in 6.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Very much for your time and...
Ready? Just a question of Nazir. Could you explain exactly what the changes you wanted in the CS District to get rid of the 20,000 and replace it with what?
No, I would like to, if the board say 20,000, leave it.
Okay.
And put a star 2 next to it and a star 3, because you already have a star 2. And the star 3 would say, "For each additional unit."
Oh, to do that, you got to have something for the first unit.
The first unit is 30,000.
Okay.
Two units, 45,000. For each additional, you need another 20.
Okay, so that's a little bit of a...
So in other words... So in other words, if I have a 95,000 square feet, I could have three units in there. So in other word, so in other word, if I have a 95,000 square feet, I could have three units in there. The way it's written now, somebody could come with 20,000 square feet and if he could, six units, he could, according to the law, it's written right here, he could do 10 units. It's been proven, it's been done.
So you need to change the language from other residential use to next...
Yeah, and do we do that elsewhere as well?
Each additional use then? Or each additional unit, I'm sorry.
And I would ask, when you say it's for one family, it's for one unit.
One unit's 30.
It's 30. For two units?
45.
It's 45 additionally or total?
Total.
So that's where we gotta be...
If you have 45,000, you could do two units, a duplex. You could separate them with a special permit or variance, it depends what zoning. Now, if you want to add, if you have another 20,000 square feet...
If you want to do three units?
It'll be three. You have another 40.
65,000.
If you have 115, you could do four units. Now, if you look, look at the MR30, it says other residential use, same like this, other residential use, 30,000 star 2. That's exactly what you want to do. Add star 3 in this matter, in this case, not star 2. You see the MR30?
Mm-hmm.
It says other residential use as well.
I see what you're saying.
But you want to change that too, right, to each additional unit, not other residential use?
No, other residential use, but the star 3 would explain in the bottom, like in the MR30 would say, you look in the bottom too, it says, "For each additional unit."
Well, and I think the one-family dwelling and two-family dwelling has to change too.
If you, if you, what do you want to change them to? I mean, they're 45,000, they're fine. You need 45,000 square feet, that seems reasonable.
Yeah, no, I'm talking about the heading language. I have to think about that.
No, it's the same as MR30, same language.
I understand the numbers, but I'm not talking about the numbers. I'm talking about how, naming them one-family dwelling, two-family, I mean, I'm seeing that as a one-family house, a two-family house.
Right.
Not apartments, not motel, hotel, not condos.
You do have a section for motel in that.
Right, I'm just, I'm just not certain that this language has one-family dwelling, two-family dwelling. I mean, I would say one dwelling unit or two dwelling units, which to me is different from a freestanding single-family house or a two-family house.
Well, then you have to change the R30, the MR30, the R43, then you have to change all the language.
Right.
But it's very clear, like one-family dwelling, two-family dwelling. I don't, I know I'm a foreigner, but I can understand it well. Can you? I mean, it's very understanding. One unit's 30,000, two units, two-family dwellings, 45.
Okay, all right, well...
The goal is to clarify.
Clarify, right, which is what we've been working on, is clarify the...
Yeah.
Okay, all right, good suggestion, thank you.
Well, that's other residential. You could do as many as you want if you have the square footage.
Okay.
That's very important, if you guys could change it.
Yep, all right, thank you very much.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Board.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing, so if there's anybody in the audience that would like Mr. Madden?
I just have one question. Where are these other residential use defined in the bylaw in place? I mean, that's, you know, we asked the question at office.
Bill, can you come up to the microphone?
Yeah, please.
Yeah, I was just wondering where other residential use is defined in the bylaw. What is it? What's it intended to be?
There was a place where I was seeing it and it was very...
Definition on 123, I think.
I think it was 3 or...
But it doesn't answer the question, other residential use, kind of leaves it up to to someone to come up with that, what that other residential use is intended to be.
Yeah, so if we change it to say, single, you know, one dwelling unit...
Or each additional unit.
Two dwelling units and for each additional unit, but we have to be consistent through? So I don't know, in the residential part, it seems like that would apply well, but I'm not sure about the other, so I sort of want to think about it.
Well, no, that's good. I mean, if you want to, Mr. Madden makes sense. How do you, what do you define other residential use? You could say each additional dwelling instead of other residential use.
Or unit, like you say, I mean...
Change dwelling to unit, yeah, it's not, it's not clear.
What is another, other residential use? Is it a boxable? Is it, you know, an accessory residential structure? I mean, what is it? There's a lot of that stuff coming down the pike now with those small, you know, 500, 600 square foot residential units.
Tiny houses.
Tiny houses, I mean, you know, boxables are huge companies, that's what they manufacture.
I think we gotta look at it through the whole thing.
Yeah, you gotta change them all in every section.
Right, because in every, every one of these tables, including village districts and...
Right, it all says other residential use.
It goes through every one of them and it says one-family dwelling, two-family dwelling, other residential use, non-residential use, in everyone.
I think the simple solution is just to change it in the definitions. Just have it in the definition section of what other residential use means. And then that applies to each section.
But if we change it to unit.
What do you suggest it should say in the definition?
I haven't come up with a suggestion yet. I just know that it comes up as a topic of discussion in my office on a regular basis as to what it means, what can we do there? So that mean apartment building, 50 units that we can put on 20 acres and, you know, or is it condos, apartment buildings, townhouses, you know?
I think we need to test it and see how it...
But that was the only thing I was thinking of while you bring, while we were talking about 6.
Thank you, Chef.
Thank you.
Annie, now I'm afraid.
Annie Hayes, Barbara Zane. I had a conversation with Guy Campina today, and I'm also remembering when the 60 million renovation to the existing sewage was proposed at the Select Persons about a month ago, maybe. And both times, he said there's no more sewage capacity. So these changes, I'm wondering how they dovetail with that fact now and in the future.
This was not about making any changes, this was about cleaning up the language.
Language, okay, all right.
Thank you. Okay.
About the other residential use, I can't put my finger on it. But Wayham Village and Onset Village, that's other residential use. The village district is other residential use. So I'll be careful how to change that language. I can't put my finger on it right now, which section? I've read it somewhere.
If you find something...
Yeah, just if you find something or you have other thoughts, just vote it.
Article 3 lists out the, all the residential uses and describes them. That'd be where you'd have the other residential uses.
Article 3?
Article 3. That's where the use table is and where the definitions of the uses are in the zoning bylaw. And it uses the term dwelling as well, so you'd have to...
It's gotta go through the whole bylaw.
Yeah, you'd have to change the whole bylaw, if you change dwelling now.
So I guess the best bet right now, just add the star 3 and put for each additional unit.
With the footnote, yep. Okay.
Very well.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much, and we'll work on that thing. Shoot you an email or a memo through Monique or through Sonia, and hopefully we could...
I say if we can collaborate between the boards, I think we can make some changes with little hot burn.
Thank you, thank you. Mr. Chairman, Board, yes.
Through you, well, this chairman, just to let you know, we're looking at some other bylaws. I'm looking at Article 15 right now, still being thought through. And we have subdivision rules and regs that we've updated. So just so you're aware, if you have thoughts, send them over to...
We will, we will from now.
And that'll, excuse me, that'll all be put in this communication platform that we're gonna put together. It seems it would be a good idea if that gets thrown in and that we know that you're looking at it and that will keep us, you know...
I'm just sharing it right now.
Yeah, well, I'm just saying, it'll be good that what we approve will definitely help all this out, right?
Yep.
So are you gonna try to change that 1380?
I've made a note.
It's very important you change that.
Ken, we're not opening Article 13 right now, right? We were looking at 14, 15, new article that you proposed. And we're not, we're not opening Article 12 right now, right? Ken? Oh, is he thinking? Oh.
12 or 13?
12.
13 was the question, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Well, 13 was the question, I was just summarizing what we had been thinking about. We're trying to weave all the threads and if we pull this thread, what other...
What unravels, yeah. Okay.
Very well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, gentlemen.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So do we have time to continue this based on tonight's discussion on Article 6? Or are we gonna run out of time again?
I think you have time to address it. We can get the modifications done in the, by the time of the next meeting. You have until the end of September to get the articles.
The 23rd was what you said, we have...
23rd is what I got from the Selectman, it was the deadline for the warrant. So you have time until that to address them.
Yeah, it's not a lot of time. Okay.
Well, we could meet every night.
Yeah. Yeah, I'd say it's starting to, it's starting to add up.
Are we meeting next week on that note?
No.
We didn't have anything on...
Don't have anything scheduled next week. Yes. Well, you want to meet?
It's the first Monday off in two months.
Okay, so I would entertain a motion to continue the public hearing on Article 6, Amendment to Article 6 Density and Dimensional Zoning Bylaw to the meeting of...
9/12. 9/12.
That was dedicated to Fearing Hill, I thought.
Yeah, can we, I mean, I don't think the small changes that we're talking about are gonna be...
It should be relatively easy to address.
Yeah, I think if we were gonna squeeze anything in, this would be it.
Yeah, this should be easy.
This. Correct. Yeah, so I mean, if we don't hear from Conservation by then, then the discussion on Fearing Hill is gonna be...
It's unlikely that we'll hear from Conservation by then because they're gonna want to hear what Mr. Price has to say.
Well, we don't have any choice and we're out of time if we're gonna try to get Article 6 done before the deadline.
Oh, no, I was just saying, Fearing Hill, I think you could still slide.
Yeah, all right, so let's entertain a motion to move the continued public hearing on Amendment to Article 6 to the regularly scheduled planning board meeting of September 12.
With the intention of ending it.
Ending it, yes. Well, we have no choice, we're out of time. If our deadline is the 23rd, we're gonna, we're not gonna have any more time to publish another public hearing. So do we have a motion?
Yes, so moved.
Second.
Motion by Sam Corbett, seconded by Carla Schultz for a vote. Sherry?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Jane?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Carl? The chair votes aye, okay. For an additional article?
No, it's not.
Zoning by law?
No, we can advertise another.
The one that Mr. Al Colasi asked about, which is that 1381, it's a one...
A one specific item, it's not a whole article.
But it's an important one.
Yeah.
I will be prepared to show you the difference between what the state statute says and how this got written. I think the intention was okay, but the way that it reads leaves some wide open gaps in what people are allowed to do. So if it would be appropriate for that one thing, it would mean repairing, I think, which is a glaring error in that section.
So we need to advertise that?
Right. Yeah, that's why I'm asking if there's time to advertise it as an article, Ken.
I mean, how much discussion can we have?
Yeah, it can't be that, it's not gonna be that in-depth, especially if Charlie's gonna prepare a summary for us.
I'll prepare what the state statute actually reads and how the difference is in this language, and you'll see the difference of it. So it should be easy enough to repair.
Maybe we could certainly go for a town meeting and say, "This is a one thing, it's really important, cleans it up."
Yeah. All right, so we need...
We need a public hearing on Article 12, a public hearing on Article 12.A or whatever we're gonna call your...
Are we muddying the waters? I mean, we're already talking...
These things have to get done by town meeting. The stormwater update for MS4.
There's no way we're gonna, we don't have the bandwidth on regularly scheduled meetings.
I'm just drawing out the work before us.
So we're back to what we were trying to avoid, which is the Chinese fire drill. Here we are again.
Well, we've opened these things already, though. Article 12 is already, the public hearing on Article 12 was continued until when?
There's only two dates left.
No, no, but we continued it already, so when did we continue it to?
9/12.
That's what we agreed, I can go back a little, okay, so we got Article 12, which, does that encompass your change? Or do we have to advertise a new public hearing?
It is the same content, it's just organized differently.
So we don't have to advertise a new hearing for that?
No, you don't, because it's the same content.
Okay, so then we have to open Article 13, which is a one-word change, so that...
Right, well, just, yeah, was it 1380 dot .1?
We've agreed to defer Article 15, although that's important. Do we have to make any changes to Article 14, Ken? At one point, we were gonna...
We were, we potentially have petition articles coming forward as well too that we'll have to have hearings on as well. So I would say keep it tight because there could be other articles that come in beyond what you are proposing on your own.
So, all right, so for the 12th, we've already got, Article 12 has already been pushed off to the 12th.
And we have 6.
We have 6 and we'll add 1381 dot 3.
What about 15?
We're gonna push that, we're just not gonna be ready to get into that.
I agree with that piece of mail, like that's the problem we had in the past.
And we're gonna let Jane, Jane, just rewrite all the zoning bylaws and come back with your update.
I got my pencil.
You can use my pen. Okay, so do we need a motion to push these out?
Well, no, the only one we need is right now.
It's just 1380.
I move that we publish a public hearing notice for article, updates to Article 13 to be scheduled, regularly scheduled meeting 9/12.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Carla Schultz, seconded by Sam Corbett for a vote. Sherry?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Jane?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Carl?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
I'll get that information to her before that meeting.
Excellent, that would be great.
That'd be great.
Yeah.
So in response to that little comment about me and my pencil?
Oh, I was kidding, I'm sorry.
No, but really, I have something that, I do think that the zoning bylaw is something that we probably should take a holistic look at.
Start from the back.
I think I've been saying that for a while casually, but I really do think that it's about time because it's not just a matter of cleaning up individual articles, it's the coordination from between articles that's also snarly right now. And I did hear rumblings that there was a group already working on that, but I reached out to Claire Smith and she said that she's not aware of a group that's doing that, but there was some interest in it.
Doing what?
In working on the bylaw.
From the back.
And I just, I heard a room... And I, I just, I heard a rumor, so I reached out to Claire and she said she does not know of anything, but that Peter Titlebaum is, has been interested in doing that, so...
Okay.
I would like to see that start to happen.
So do we want to form a separate committee?
I don't know how, what the process is for doing that, but...
The process that Claire had set up was a town meeting committee. As town moderator, she's, she can create committees, and she created a zoning study committee.
Now it's Margaret, right?
Now it's Margaret, she here as the town moderator, and she could create a zoning study committee as well.
So do we need to make a recommendation for that to happen?
Yes, that's a good idea if you want it to happen that way.
What's the format, so that I can word my motion correctly?
I'll look it up for you.
Okay.
I would, I would think it would be pretty straightforward, you make a motion that we approach the town moderator to set up a committee, a zoning, zoning bylaw committee?
Actually, I think it's going to be a submission as an article for the town warrant.
Okay.
Yeah, town meeting warrant article.
All right.
It's a zoning study committee.
Submitted by the planning board, it would be a warrant article.
Okay. Okay. So all of this discussion that we've been having is pretty much centered around other, other business, upcoming amendments to zoning bylaws, so that is off the books?
That's up under two.
Okay. Okay.
I'm just... It's a thought that just occurred, would it be helpful to have attached to the agenda just a list of what's pending? That way, if it's just on the agenda, and it is a reminder, we can talk about it at any meeting, under the other business, Article 6, Article 12, Article 13.
And if they're, and if they're scheduled for an upcoming meeting?
Well, whatever, as long, as long, yeah, other, under other business, as long as there's a line item, we can talk about it.
Right. Okay, that sounds good, I like that.
And then we still have the public hearings, when there's a public hearing.
Right, and we can choose to either act on it or not.
Or even if it's just an update.
Yeah. Okay.
That way, it's not you and I and everybody trying to figure out, what are the, what are the things we're working on.
Okay. Okay. My head hurts. Bill, you've been very patient.
Are we going to talk about Wareham Retail Management before that?
Yes, Wareham Retail Management, have we gotten any updates from them?
Hello? No. So, the last message I received from them was, unless Ken has any, oh, I thought he was getting up. Jordan reached out to me on Wednesday, July 20th, and he said, you know, he gave me a call, things are taking longer than anticipated, they have recently parted ways with their G C, and they brought someone on new to help finish this up, so they, you know, would like to have the written plan over to me by the week's end. That was obviously over two weeks ago. I reached out, I think maybe about five days later, and just said, hey, where are we with this? And I haven't heard anything back from them yet.
Can we, with the board's approval, can we structure an email to said contact instructing them that we are...
They're summoned.
I don't want to use the word demand, but we're, we're expecting a resolution to this matter by...
Tomorrow.
Well, I was going to say Friday. So...
Okay.
To be clear, resolution, they want the problem solved, or you want the plan?
I want the plan with the timeline. So if we, if we can get their, their anticipated resolution to the problem, including what it is they're going to do, and the timeline they expect it to be done in.
Right, yeah.
And CC the board?
Oh, sure.
Do that?
And make it clear that we're going to review and we have the right to not accept their timeline.
Correct. Oh, yeah, I mean, if they come back to us and say, yeah, we'll have it done by Christmas, then obviously that's not going to work.
Well, I just want to make it clear, it's not, we're just not taking it in and...
If you want, Monique, why don't you, if you want to structure that email and send it to me?
Sure.
And then I'll critique it if it need be, which I'm sure it won't, because everything I've seen you write so far has been spot on.
Thanks.
And then we'll send it to them, CC the board, and say, basically, in as nice a way as we can, we're all done waiting.
Yep.
We want, we want this issue with the dumpsters and the drainage brought to a resolution.
Yeah, okay, sounds good.
Okay.
While we're on other business and while Mr. Madden is actually here, are there any remaining items on master mill work, or are we done?
No, I believe we're finished.
That's what I thought, we're done, so there's no more items.
Yay. Okay. Bill?
Is she ready for me?
I'm, I'm, I'm ready.
Can we actually entertain this if it's not on the agenda?
Yes, we can, because it has...
No, I was just going to give them the...
Not according to the rules that we got out, that we did send to earlier.
Well, I sent an email to Ken and asked him what the story was with the late submission and whatnot, he said that it's within our purview, because he has to submit it.
Only if you have items not considered within 48 hours.
On it, on it.
Or on the agenda.
Damien's, Damien's pantry. They currently operate in Wareham down the Ocean Strand.
Unanticipated?
Ocean Strand plant.
On the agenda, it's supposed to be on the agenda.
How can it be on the agenda if it's unanticipated?
That, there's a line item that's supposed to be on every agenda that says, business not reasonably expected within 48 hours, and it's been on every other agenda except this one.
So could we call that an oversight? If it's been on every agenda but this one? Can't we, can't we consider it an oversight on the plan?
I don't know, we got the open meeting law guidance from the Select Board, and I don't know.
Ken?
Go ahead, let, you're the decider, I'm just giving you my...
I want, I want clarification. One second, one second, Bill.
Under, under Article 15, it says that the process requires the applicant to submit the application to the planning board at a meeting.
Ladies, please.
At a meeting of the, of the board.
It's not on the agenda?
Even if it's not on the agenda, it's the same as they can submit it to the town clerk at any time as well, too, and to the, the planning office at any time when they're ready. It's just that you only meet at certain times, and so this is when they have the availability to, to meet with you and submit it.
Okay.
I think this is something we should change in Article 15 as well, as a matter of fact.
Okay. Because Bill always does a...
My, my point, though, to the chair was, is that normally we have a line item on the agenda, open-ended line item that says, items not reasonably expected.
You're correct, you're correct, Carl.
That would have, that would have solved this whole...
Yeah.
So was it just an oversight when we prepared the agenda?
Yeah, the agenda usually has the list of projects, outstanding projects as well, too, and it's not on there, so the agenda's changed a little bit, we'll, we'll get that back, we'll get it back in.
We're not going to have a problem, then, with this?
No.
Okay, I will state for the record again, and I don't mean this in a mean way, I am all done with the 11th hour surprises. Not going to do it anymore. If it's not on the agenda, it ain't happening, because I don't like being blindsided. We get no time to look at any of this before he's sitting in front of us.
Well, the, the process here is the submission of an application, it's not a presentation of the application, it's just a submission of it.
Looks like he's going to present.
Well, he shouldn't be, he should just be presenting the, the application to you, submitting it before your review at this time.
Okay.
Well, the application's actually just submitted pursuant to the, to the, to Article 15 site plan review requirement, which we're supposed to submit the application package to the planning board, so that you can evaluate it and determine when you want to hold the public hearing, determine what the schedule is going to be on, on, on things and what have you. I'm not doing anything more than, than trying to follow through with that requirement of Article 15. We have filed it with the town clerk, we filed it with the planning board earlier, this, earlier in the day, and that's all, that's all we're here to do, is to fulfill that requirement of the site plan review process. I need to speak a word about the project at all, I'm going to get more than one opportunity, I'm sure, to do that. I just thought that I would hand you out some half-size, you could look at it in advance of the distribution of the plans from the planning board to other, to the board members and to other town departments, and, and go from there. It's just, you know, a relatively small project of an, you know, it's an existing operation in town, it's moving to a, a new facility on, on Route 6, between Swift Beach Road and Brown Street on that, on that piece of land, and small 5,000 square foot building, and parking, stormwater, utilities, things of that nature, and I just, like I said, I'm just here to fulfill that requirement of submitting it at a planning board hearing.
All right, so, we're submitted? Right.
And I don't think you can set a hearing date today, because I believe that there's some other protocols within the site plan review that have to take place before that meeting date can be, can be scheduled.
Butter notification, things like that.
Well, in addition to a butter notification, but I think there's other procedural matters that the planning board has to undertake before you can schedule that public hearing.
What, what would those be, Ken?
Those would be filing the application with the, the town clerk and the tax collector and the assessor.
And the most important thing is the circulation of the 13 plan sets to the various town boards. That's really what has to happen. I think there's a timeline that allows them, gives them an opportunity to review things, submit comments, and that should be received prior to scheduling of the, the public hearing.
Okay, so, so tonight, we...
You don't need to schedule the public hearing tonight.
Tonight, we can just consider this present, the application presented to us.
Submit. Normally, we get like a nice cover letter from you that... Yeah, it's all, it's there. Oh, it's not in, in this? It's with, it's with the application that it's going to be distributed, I've already provided all those. You're going to post it and create a project, then I'll look for it there.
Yeah.
That's why I was looking, this is just, just the site plan.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Just trying to have Damien's pantry not feed me to the hungry.
You don't want to be put on this shelf.
Yeah, it's for me, too. Hate this crap.
It's right on Sis...
I'm at the end of that road. Right where it's going, Littleton Complex is going back there.
Yeah, no, I'm just worried about traffic.
So where is this?
Right, you know, you know, the Littleton Housing Project. Right, we just talked about Egress and Cranberry Cottage, so you got Cranberry Cottage, Brown Road, this parcel, Sisfeet Road, Joe's Gas.
Yep, yep.
And none of these are going to meet your 100-foot...
Nacho's Gas.
I think that, I think if you look at it, you might find that it does, actually. No, no, the other ones don't. Oh, the other ones, yeah, can't speak for them, but...
Okay.
But in any event, we just wanted to, to get it submitted and apologize for one of those things that...
I don't blame you.
At the last minute.
I don't blame you.
Thank you. Somebody will.
They won't hold it against you, Bill.
This is going to, I'm going to move.
Okay, I don't know about everybody else, but I've had enough, I didn't entertain a motion to...
I'm going to move, I'm going to move that we...
Adjourn?
Return.
Yes, so, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion by Carl, seconded by Mike, all in favor of adjourning. Sherry?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Jane?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Carl?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.